Value the differing roles between municipalities, larger, smaller, and also counties. In addition, we needed to come up with a compromise solution that would be agreed on and supported by all. So let me tell you a little bit about how the current distribution agreement reimburses the county for annexation. There's basically two methods. First of all, Cumberland County has reimbursed a portion of our losses that were incurred prior to 2003. That's the $4 million that we first spoke of. The second mechanism for reimbursement is for any annexation that occurred beginning in 2003. This original agreement was signed in October of 2003. Just as a little bit of history, in March of 2003, the Board of Commissioners actually voted to change the method of distribution from per capita to ad valorem. The working group worked, came back together, worked with the municipalities and the county to develop some 10 months later this compromise solution. For any annexation after 2003, all the municipalities agreed to reimburse Cumberland County 50% of their sales tax gain. The working group really saw this as a win-win for all jurisdictions, and that's why it was supported by each jurisdiction. First of all, it recognizes that counties have undiminished expenditure responsibilities to provide basic human services, including education, even after an annexation. But this compromise solution also acknowledges that municipalities have new expenditure obligations as a result of annexation. Thus, they keep 50% of the sales tax that they would gain. At this point, I'd like to share a little bit of financial information about what the agreement has put in place. On this screen, you can see that Cumberland County has incurred a sales tax loss from fiscal year 1995 through fiscal year 2015 of $116.9 million. Let me explain why we selected 1995. 1995 began the period of time of significant annexations by the City of Fayetteville for that 10-year period. Through the agreement, the City of Fayetteville has reimbursed Cumberland County $57.8 million. That leaves a net loss in sales tax to Cumberland County on a cumulative basis of $59 million. Now, that's a planned loss. That's a loss that we agreed to in accepting a 50% sharing of the sales tax. This is a different perspective. This is really an annual perspective of the revenue that the city has gained through annexation. We'll use 2015 as the example. On an annual basis, it's projected that the city has gained sales tax of $13.3 million. Through the agreement, on an annual basis, the city has shared $6.6 million. Sales tax is not the only revenue gained. Those new property owners pay city property taxes. It's estimated on an annual basis that the city has gained $7.4 million for a total annual annexation revenue gain of $14.1 million. As you know, the original agreement expired June 30, 2013. Through the work of the Mayor's Coalition, the original agreement was extended through June 30 of 2016. Sometime after that extension was agreed on by all jurisdictions, the Mayor's Coalition came back, and they sought a longer-term extension through June 30, 2023. The county and all the municipalities except the City of Fayetteville agreed for this extension through 2023. The newspaper has talked about the lack of negotiation between the city and the county, and I'd like to address that at this point. The city manager reached out to me when I was the interim manager about having discussions about the current agreement. And what he threw out for my consideration was that he could no longer support the current sales tax distribution agreement, and that he would be willing to give the county credit for shared services, basically getting that $6 million back as revenue. They would give us credit for participating in some community projects. That credit did not equate to cash, and that would mean a loss of revenue against the services that we were currently providing. We did come back in the last 60 days, the city manager's office and our office, and we've had some discussions about the agreement. The city manager again affirmed his commitment to not recommend renewal of the agreement. At that time, he basically gave me two scenarios to consider. The first scenario was a phase down of the agreement to about $3 million from six. The second scenario, which he indicated was probably the more favored option, was a complete phase out of the entire agreement. The newspaper reported that we were at an impasse, and I think the impasse was actually created because I could not accept either of those scenarios. I didn't believe it was financially prudent to accept a $3 million or a $6 million loss. I believe the loss of that amount of revenue, either one, $3 million or $6 million, would impair our ability to continue to provide services countywide to our citizens. So let me show you what happens if that agreement is not renewed. If you'll look at the far right-hand side of your screen under net gain or loss, if the current method of per capita remains in place without the agreement, Cumberland County will lose $5.9 million. The county schools will lose a little over $1 million in sales tax funds that they've been previously using to pay debt service. The City of Fayetteville will gain $6.8 million in sales tax. At this point, I think it's appropriate to have a little bit of a discussion about the services that we provide on a county basis, and first begin with mandated services. As you know, the North Carolina General Statute set forth mandated services for cities and counties. On the far right-hand side of the screen, you can see that there's one mandated service for cities, and that's building code enforcement. Now, let me say this. I acknowledge that cities and the City of Fayetteville provides much more than building code enforcement, but they're mandated to only provide one. On the left-hand side of the page or the screen, you can see the long list of significant services that counties are required by statute to provide. I will tell you that these services make up anywhere from 75% to 80% of our county budget. In an annexation, the county still is required to provide these services to all citizens throughout the county regardless of the jurisdiction they live in. County services are provided and available to all citizens regardless of where they live, the mandated services, as well as the many quality-of-life services that we provide, animal control, libraries, support of our Fayetteville Technical Community College, veteran services, and cooperative extension. We've talked just generically about county services. I'd like to provide you some statistical information that will help you see the lives in this community, the many lives that are touched by our county services. In the area of animal control, as you know, over the last five or six years, this board has placed an emphasis on increasing the level of service that we provide throughout the community in animal control. We've added seven-day coverage 24 hours a day. As a result of that, we answer over 41,000 calls on an annual basis, and we're responsible for over 12,000 animals that enter our shelter on an annual basis. In addition, we've increased the number of animals that we have been able to adopt on a monthly basis. Child support. About six years ago, child support in Cumberland County was still administered by the state of North Carolina. The state passed that responsibility down to Cumberland County to administer that program. That also came without any additional matching funds, which means it was an unfunded mandate to Cumberland County. In our first year of operating child support, we had to match the federal and state dollars with $1 million of county funding. We've been extremely successful in helping to provide for the children and for the custodial parents in this community. You can see that we have almost 21,000 open cases, and those cases really are families and children that we serve through the child support department. Based on the efforts of that department, on an annual basis, we bring in $40 million for these custodial parents. That's $40 million that's infused into our local economy. Veteran services. We have a very small veteran services department. We have less than 10 employees, but you know, we have a very significant population of veterans in our community. So far this year, we have seen over 8,500 veterans this year. We do not receive any federal or state funding for veteran services. It's 100% county funded. We assist veterans in navigating the system to help them claim the benefits they're entitled to as a result of their service to our country. In the area of the Department of Social Services, on a monthly basis, we're responsible for administering food and nutrition services to over 34,000 cases. On a more personal basis, that's 34,000 families. In addition, we administer Medicaid services to over 77,000 citizens in our community. Those are 77,000 citizens that may otherwise not have access to quality health care. In addition, we have a high number in foster care. This chart shows 905. Today, I am sad to say that we are actually responsible for 916 children in foster care. We're responsible for providing basic care 24 hours a day to these children. In the area of childcare subsidy, we're responsible for administering this program, and we also provide a county match. Let me tell you what this does. This allows parents to be gainfully employed outside of their home. They get a subsidy so that their children are in quality daycare. This helps them to become independent, to move away from dependence on these public assistance programs. Department of Public Health. Most citizens will tell you that they don't receive any county services, and I'm here to tell you this evening that each of us in this room receives some service from public health. In the area of environmental health, each of us enjoy eating out at restaurants. The environmental health section is responsible for inspecting restaurants and daycares, school cafeterias, nursing homes, and other institutions that provide food to make sure that the food is safe for human consumption. That's a significant responsibility, especially going to daycares and making sure that that's a safe environment for your children or grandchildren. In addition, we have several primary care clinics, and right now, we serve over 17,500 citizens, provide them medical care on an ongoing basis. Otherwise, these individuals may end up in the emergency room at the hospital, which is a much more costly solution. Public library. That's a quality service that we provide. As you know, we're very proud of our national award-winning library system. They have been very creative in developing programs and events for the community, community and citizens of all ages. They have program attendance of over 100,000 and a door count of over 1.3 million on an annual basis. One of the significant events that they're involved in is a job fair. They host more than one job fair during the year. They partner with many county departments to do that. But those library workers go beyond just hosting it. They help applicants build a resume. They help them with interviewing skills and prepare them and help match them with employers that attend that job fair. Those are outside the traditional services that you would ordinarily see in a public library system. So what options do we have if this agreement expires? The first option is a potential reduction to services. But where would we begin? Would we cut the hours of a library, or we close a branch library? That's really not an easy solution. One of the things that I've learned, and I'm very proud of from our leadership team perspective, is our departments do not deliver services to this community and to our citizens from silos. Our services are dovetailed together, and they overlap and support one another. Librarians, our library system provides public access terminals. Many of the individuals that seek benefits from the Department of Social Services enter the library and use those public access terminals to apply for benefits or to recertify on a monthly basis. Those librarians assist them with that. In addition, our animal control department is providing specialized training to our social workers. As you know, unfortunately, we have had some children that have been affected by pets in the home and vicious animals. Our animal service department is partnering with the Department of Social Services to assist those social workers in handling those very delicate cases. So where would you make that reduction? Do you cut animal control, or would you cut veteran services? That's a difficult question. The second option is a potential tax increase to countywide. I believe it would take a potential three-cent tax increase to cover the loss of these funds. That's a difficult decision as well. That places a greater burden on the property owners in this community. A third option is to change the sales tax distribution method. As I stated earlier in the presentation, we have historically used the per capita method. We could go to the ad valorem method, and I'd like to show you that impact. This chart shows you the net financial impact of making the change to ad valorem. On the far right-hand side of the screen, you can see the net impact of changing from per capita ad valorem. Cumberland County would gain $2.2 million. The school system would gain $725,000. The fire districts would gain $2.6 million, and the recreation district would gain 1.2. If you'll remember when I was explaining the ad valorem method, under that method, every taxing district that has a levy would be eligible to receive sales tax dollars. The City of Fayetteville would lose 4.7 million, and the other municipalities combined would lose 2.1 million. My recommendation at the beginning was to seek to extend on a long-term basis the current agreement. This evening, if I were only concerned about Cumberland County, or more specifically the county's budget, my recommendation would be much different. It would be to change the method to ad valorem. But I don't believe that's in the best interest from a community-wide perspective. $4.7 million is a significant revenue loss to the City of Fayetteville. This chart shows the significant impact to the other municipalities. Eastover would lose $422,000. It would take a 16-cent tax increase on their town rate to make up this loss. The town of Falcon would lose $52,000. That doesn't sound like a lot of money, but on a $200,000 budget, that's a significant reduction. It would take a 37-cent tax increase to make up that $52,000 loss, and it would take a significant reduction in services for that small town to cover that loss. The town of Hope Mills would lose 1.1 million for an 11-cent tax increase. Spring Lake would lose almost a half a million. By asking to extend the current agreement, Cumberland County is not asking for any additional revenue. We're asking to keep the same compromise solution. I truly believe this is a community issue. This is not a City of Fayetteville and Cumberland County issue, and that was evidenced by the last screen that you just saw. It has a significant impact on the other local governments in our community. This agreement will have an impact on every resident, either from a financial perspective or a service perspective. The current agreement maintains that win-win scenario that that working group sought to achieve back in 2002 and 2003. There was a significant amount of negotiation that took place over a 14-month period to carve out that win-win compromise solution. That solution minimizes the budget implications for all jurisdictions. Again, it acknowledges that the county continues to have obligations to our citizens even after an annexation, but it also recognizes that municipalities have new costs and new obligations to the residents they bring into their jurisdiction through annexation. So here's a timeline that we're recommending. I believe that we need to seek, first, seek long-term agreement to extend the current agreement, and we need to get agreement from all municipalities no later than January 31, 2016. Failure to do so, I believe, brings us to some questions. We need to begin determining what our budget impact will be and what alternatives we have. Failure to have unanimous agreement, I will recommend that February 4 that we have a work session and begin talking about these issues, and at the March 7 board meeting, at that point, I would recommend that we consider which method of sales tax that we'll use for distribution in the coming fiscal year. So, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I realize that you've heard this presentation again, and some of you have heard it multiple times, as we have tried to educate other boards, the municipalities, about this important, community-wide issue. So thank you for your patience and endurance this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Cannon. Yes, we have heard this report several times, but it bears repeating several more times because the issue is, it looms large, and this decision will have to deliberate very strongly. I believe Commissioner Evans had his hand up first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, County Manager, for bringing this to the public because it's very important that each of our citizens know exactly what we're dealing with here.
And to be real honest with you, until this discussion that you presented to us tonight, it really put more light on it for me, and it hurt me to my heart to know that there are certain items or certain obligations that we have to the citizens of this county that will be affected, especially individuals that are not as fortunate as others. We're talking about our school system. We're talking about health care. We're talking about a number of other issues. Medicaid. We're talking about child support. Women are struggling trying to get monies from these individuals that's not doing what they're supposed to do, and we're having this difficult time with one governmental body that serves the same citizens that we serve. It's really appalling to me. I sit on the Parks and Recreation Commission, and there's discussion now, not saying that it's not needed, but there's now discussion about a $35 million bond referendum to improve our parks and recreation. That same governmental body that's proposing this is not willing to come to the table to make sure that our citizens are taken care of to the very best of their ability. I hope I didn't mistake that, but this is what I'm gathering, and if I'm wrong, please correct me.
You are correct.
Now, there's three ways that you have pointed out to us that there could possibly be some resolution to this. There was one way that I didn't hear. If there is not a meeting of the minds that's going to be beneficial for the citizens of Cumberland County, is there any legal steps that could be taken to ensure that our citizens are protected in a manner in the services that we present or that we have to, that's mandated to us to give to the citizens of this county? Is there anything in that realm that we can do to make sure it happens?
Well, I'm not an attorney, and I will make this comment, and if the attorney wants to correct me, that'd be fine, but the current agreement expires June 30, 2016. I'm not sure that we have any legal recourse based on that agreement. It would take unanimous consent from all nine municipalities, basically, to craft or to renew that current agreement for some basis. We then have three other options if we can't seek agreement on extending the agreement, and I listed those, reducing services, increasing the tax rate, or changing the method of sales tax distribution in this county.
You know, and I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, and I promise you I'll be quiet after this. The thing that gets me is that this board here is working very hard to find ways to continue to maintain the services that we are mandated to maintain, not only mandated to maintain, but as decent elected officials to provide to the citizens of this county. Now, with those options that we have, and I didn't hear from our attorney, I don't think I heard from him, there's got to be some other way that this can happen legally? I don't know. I'm not an attorney. I'm not, but there's got to be something, and I don't want to make it feel like we're trying to rough, well, not me, I'm speaking for me. I'm not trying to make it seem like we're trying to strong-arm anybody, but...
The legal, Mr. Evans, Commissioner Evans, the legal ramifications of this really play out in the budget, in the adoption of the budget. The real key for the suggestions that the county... The real key for the suggestions that the county manager's made about the alternatives is if you change to the, you change to the distribution method, that must be done and department revenue...